The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call to row.
Alderman Trup. Alderwoman Flowers. Alderman Bosley. Alderman Moore. Alderwoman Hubbard. Alderwoman Triplet. Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Ortman. Alderman Vollmer. Alderman Villa. Alderman Arnoldowitz. Alderman Wessels. Alderwoman Howard. Alderwoman Florida. Alderwoman Behringer. Alderman Rhodey. Alderman Kennedy. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Vaccaro. Alderman Ogilvy. Alderman Cohn. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Crewson. President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Young. Alderman Conway. Alderman Villa. Alderman Wessels. Alderman Rhodey. Alderwoman Davis. Alderman Schmidt. Alderman French. Alderman Boyd. Alderman Williamson. Alderwoman Crewson. Twenty present.
Quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Wilder of Lafayette Square United Methodist Church, which is my pastor.
Let us pray. Most holy and gracious, loving God, we give you thanks for this day. And we give you thanks for this moment in time. And God, we give you thanks for these people who said they will serve your city. That they have been elected and appointed to be in this place, in this moment, in this time. God, we pray for your anointing just just fall upon them and upon this place. God, we pray for clear eyes that look past broken buildings and see restored, rebuilt homes. We pray for courageous spirits that look beyond challenges and agendas and see that we can be the city on the hill. A beacon to show other cities how to rebuild and be glorious. And God, we ask for strength to make it all a reality. Use this time, oh God, to transform our cities, protect everyone who serves, and bring your peace and harmony here that it may abound. And we pray that everything we do brings honor and glory to you. In your name we pray. Amen.
Before we continue with our regular agenda. I'd like everyone in the chambers and galleries to join me also for a moment of silence. We've lost a number of friends since we last met, including former Alderman Ruggieri from the 24th Ward. Alderman Greg Carter. We're joined today by the family members of Alderman Gregory Carter. So standing back near his desk, you'll see Gregory Carter Jr., the son of Gregory Carter. So thank you for joining us today. Jennifer Carter, in the pink blouse and gray suit, Greg Carter's daughter. Thank you for joining us today. Waddell Carter, the tall guy back there, the dashing man, Greg Carter's brother. Thank you for joining us today. Kena Carter, I call her the boss, Greg Carter's sister. Thank you for joining us today. I think everyone knows Chris Carter, Greg Carter's nephew and state representative, who has served us very well. And it's tough up there in Jefferson City, so thank you for joining us today. Ben Phillips, Greg Carter's cousin. Thank you for joining us today, and everybody knows Ben. Bernice Jones King, one of Greg Carter's close, personal friends for years and former Alderman person here at the Board of Aldermen. Thank you for joining us today. And also Vervis Jones, thank you for joining us today, a family friend and a family member of Greg Carter. So if everyone in the chambers and galleries is able to stand, please rise for a moment of silence for Alderman Greg Carter. Former Alderman Ruggieri of the 24th Ward. And also to honor the 11th anniversary of the 9/11 victims. The City TV 10 has produced a short video of Greg Carter to honor the memory of Greg Carter. It's a short one, and they want to play it for us here today. Also, on the desk back here, we've placed 27 roses on the desk to signify the 27th Ward. And also the Wine and Roses, which is a ball that Alderman Carter held every year in honor of his mother and her legacy. So City TV 10, you want to roll the video?
Please stand before the board of Aldermen, Gregory Carter, ladies and gentlemen.
I have streets to paint.
That's why I was about to talk about more painting in town. And roll and clean.
I have sun lots to repair. I have trees to cut down. I have windows to dry and light.
Please hold on, come on. Today, by committee, there is a duty to this for the first thing, and then we're hoping to eliminate this violence once and for all. We saw on the case.
Children not ready to see. You got to be efficient, Charlie.
So on time. They came out of work. They have had a whole great turnaround, a turnaround. They really have to represent. But Alderman Carter, they just talk about themselves. He said they wouldn't do that, especially in the area of our neighborhood.
So if we sit here, pulling our guns, doing happy, doing, pulling it out. It was a challenge for the construction.
Six or seven months ago, we broke ground here. What you see behind you is a block of land that took us many years to improve. This project will consist and toward the 1930s, 1940s community. And community, there was no homes built in over 70 plus years. We had bigger houses.
Years before Carter ended the board of Aldermen, he was just like a kid, growing up in a small city in one summer. But that experience will look on his back as some of the latest.
J. Carter and Willie Carter Sr., young Gregory would graduate from Northwest High School, then later earn his college degree in business and marketing. Here, he reflects on his mother's urging to go into politics.
And come to my surprise, as not to my mother's surprise, she started really talking to me about this position back in 88, 89. And I was not interested at the time. I guess that the public may have convinced me.
When he won the Alderman position in 1993 of the 27th Ward, Carter was particularly proud that he was now representing his own neighborhood.
So basically, these people were misrepresented. They were not represented, and it was like children left without any guidance.
And then there's that something else, that perfect combination of style and substance. It's what his constituents called that Carter swagger.
Greg was a true gentleman. He was a man's man. He was a leader in this community.
But the Aldermen could also be relentless and outspoken when he felt it was necessary.
I'm gonna be honest with you. Give me two wards, two wards, and don't give me the proper support. You won't get a real effective legislator down here. You won't. We work full-time as it is. They call it part-time, but everyone here I see all the time, we work full-time. I put in 40 minimum, if not more, and I have another job. Minimum 40 hours.
Well, everyone you run into has an Alderman Gregory Carter story, a good guy story. The one and only time I got the opportunity to meet Alderman Carter was right here at the New O'Fallon Park Recreation Center on the city's north side. The day was June 6, 2012, and members of the community were just getting their first look inside. The center is not in Alderman Carter's ward, yet he was here anyway out of support. That was Alderman Gregory Carter. Well, he thought I looked familiar. I knew who he was. A brief chat and a few jokes later, he did that wide grin of his, shook my hand, and assured me we'd meet again at other community events. More than 2,000 mourners packed into Friendly Temple Missionary Baptist Church, all along the sides and back to say goodbye.
His life is an example for many people my age, young men especially. When his mother passed, he took on the torch.
It's no question Carter was a true leader, that he deserved every one of the community awards he received over the years.
We'd like to congratulate the 100 black men.
Among those, the 100 Black Men Trailblazers Award, a lifetime achievement award from the St. Louis Teachers Union, and the Chairman Award from the Human Development Corporation.
This past weekend, we dedicated the Prostate Cancer Survivors Awareness Walk to Greg because of everything that he did to make sure that the walk was successful. And to make sure there was awareness for prostate cancer.
And it's no question Alderman Carter remained a proud and loving husband and father to his wife Barbara and two children, Greg Jr. and Jennifer. From the countless residents and colleagues whose lives he touched, to his never-ending commitment to the entire St. Louis community. Alderman Gregory Carter was a true inspiration, whose spirit and elegance will be greatly missed.
To the family of Alderman Greg Carter, first, I want to commend City TV 10 for such a great tribute. And I'd ask if they can prepare DVD copies of that for the family. To the family of Alderman Greg Carter, you know, I cannot thank each and every one of you enough for the time you so graciously gave of Greg. So that he can spend the time with the city, spend the time with us to work on issues that may not have directly impacted your family, but impacted this city on the whole. The guy was a true leader, and when you think about the upbringing that he had under Paula J. Carter. I think that right now, she's smiling and they're spending time together. And Paula has to be so proud of what he did with what she taught him. So I can't thank you guys enough, and we will miss him here at the Board of Aldermen. I don't know if any other Alderman wants to say anything to the family before we move on. But thanks again for everything. Clerk, could you approach the dais real quick for me? I don't know if any member of the family would like to say anything prior to... Any member you guys find? Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize? No, you would have to come up here, Chris, you can't do it from the floor. Alderwoman from the 19th, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you guys know, I'm always looking to do something positive and creative. And Greg has been on my mind a lot, and I thought about him and his mom and how much they cared about the environment and peace. And so, one of the things that I thought I would like to do with a portion of my parks and recreation money. Is to initiate a monument in honor of them at West Florissant and Riverview, in that green space there. And I think that we can find one of our city architects or somebody from the outside who would volunteer their time to create this. You know, it just needs to be a peaceful site where if nothing else, somebody need to sit down and think for a moment, change their mind about what they're doing. And have absolute beauty there, because that was one of the things that Greg worked on with the youth. Was to make sure they understood the environment, respect the environment, and work on beautification of their neighborhood. So that's the only thing I have to offer, but it's the best I can do. And if we get to a point where we don't have enough, and all the Aldermen can't chip in enough, we need to raise the money outside. But I want it to be something very nice in honor of the both of them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Representative Carter would like to say something on behalf of the family.
Thank you, President Reed. I'm gonna be swift and quick, I just wanted to, well, we just wanted to thank you all for your prayers and your support through these last couple of weeks. Things have been tough, but we are a family that's gonna stay strong, and we're gonna make it through this together as a unit. So we are moving forward, and again, we would like to thank all of you for the calls, support, prayers, and everything. Thank you.
Any further, any further comments? Any further comments? Thanks again for everything, and understand that we stand with you. If you ever need anything from this board, me and my family, let us know, and we're with you. And, you know, we're all family. There's also these blue ribbons on your desk on behalf of Riverview Florissant Development Corporation. I don't know if Alderwoman from the 2nd Ward wants to talk about that, that they're asking Alderman to wear in memory of Gregory Carter. Alderman from the 9th, like, approach the dais. Move for adoption of our Courtesy Resolution, Congress, maintain a second on that motion. And move second about Alderman from the 23rd. Alderman from the 9th.
Today, we have the opportunity to celebrate somebody's retiring. Resolution 87 and... Alderman Conway, did you want to come up too? And Alderwoman Crewson would be here, but she couldn't make it today. She's got a good reason, I checked, so... Whereas the many ways in which Joanne Vacha has made our city a better place to live, work, and play are too numerous to recount in total. Whereas Joanne and her husband Neville were pioneers in the revitalization of the Skinker Devolvere neighborhood. And whereas Joanne began working on the times of Skinker Devolvere in 1974, served as editor, and with her husband Neville, held many backyard parties, fundraisers for the paper. Whereas in 1989, Joanne assumed the chair of the Commercial Committee, known as the Delmark Committee, spearheading the redevelopment of the East Loop. Whereas Joanne authored a history of Skinker Devolvere for the Neighborhood Centennial in 2008. And whereas Joanne was a schoolteacher and later headed the St. Louis affiliate of Neighborhood Housing Services before being hired by Operation Impact in 1991. And whereas Joanne led Operation Impact's Hope III Revitalization Program as a housing analyst and spurred for redevelopment of many city neighborhoods using Hope III, Community Development Block Grant, and other federal, state, and local resources and tools. Whereas in 1999, as part of the reorganization of the city's development agencies, Joanne became a housing analyst at the Community Development Administration. And whereas Joanne has worked especially closely with the Benton Park, Benton Park West, Shaw, Penrose neighborhoods, and the housing corporations serving each one of them. Whereas Joanne has greatly furthered neighborhood stabilization and revitalization, housing investment, and community pride, building networks of concerns in knowledgeable neighbors, developers, investors, and property owners. Whereas Joanne has begun her well-earned retirement on August the 1st, 2012. Whereas Joanne made this decision at the urging of her husband Neville and daughter Cheyenne and Deena, and their husbands and grandchildren, and many friends who want to enjoy a time with her. Whereas Joanne made this decision despite pleading from her coworkers, clients, and city government, and neighborhoods throughout the city. Whereas Joanne will be greatly missed by CDA colleagues, her friends at the Board of Aldermen, and by those throughout city government and in neighborhoods where she has worked so successfully. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Aldermen of the city of St. Louis that we pause in our deliberations to thank, congratulate Joanne Vacha for her many years of service to the city and citizens of St. Louis. And we wish her peace and happiness in her retirement. And we direct the clerk of this Board of Aldermen to spread a commemorative copy to the end so it may be presented to our honorary at the time and place deemed appropriate, which is today. Joanne, could you come up and see us? We have to do something about these resolutions. They have to make the print a little bit larger. I'm gonna, in the resolution, it just covered four of the neighborhoods. I can think back to where, when Marty was the Alderman, and actually, when I took over at that point in time in 1999, that, you know, Joanne has spurred development in Tower Grove East, and Mount Pleasant, Dutch Town. There's many more neighborhoods that can be added to this than just the ones that are in the resolution. When I think about it, I talked to Joanne before today's meeting, and it's like, when did we really meet? And it was early in the 90s when I was on the Benton Park Housing Corporation, and that's when I first met Joanne and began working. And if it weren't for Joanne and everything that she taught me about development, when I got elected in 99, I wouldn't be half, you know, the person as far as development, you know, that we've accomplished. I would never say I, because she makes me look good, and she always has. I'm gonna miss her, and if, on this resolution in 1999, when she became a housing analyst, is when I got elected as the 9th Ward Alderman. So I know no other housing analyst. I do have a new one now. Maggie Grady is sitting up in the balcony here. She's doing a wonderful job, and the advice that I have for you, Maggie, is don't try to fill Joanne's shoes, make your own tracks, because it doesn't work that way. And she's doing okay, but Joanne, I mean, she was always there. It's like she could read my mind when it came to development. She was just totally fantastic. And her own neighborhood, if you listen to the accomplishments that they did, they were involved in their neighborhood. So she had a lot of experience even coming in, you know, to the development part of it, the programs that she ran. One thing that Joanne was just really good at is bringing resources in, working with developers. There's nothing that upset me more when a developer would try to blame tax abatement because they didn't file it on my housing analyst. You know, them are fighting words. It's your responsibility to apply for tax abatement, not the housing analyst's responsibility. So, and I think that's only happened once in all the years that we've worked together. I'll close my remarks down, and, because I know Alderman Conway's biting at the bit behind me. So, anyway, thank you, and I'm not gonna present it yet until we're all done with our comments.
Well, thank you so much, Alderman, and I appreciate you intervening and getting this resolution done. You know, for other city employees out there to see what Joanne has accomplished just in the 8th Ward in the Shaw neighborhood. And I was with Alderman Cohn a couple of weeks ago and tried to explain how the 4,000 block of Shenandoah, when I first was elected, we'd have people shooting guns up and down the street. We had 10 or 12 CDA properties there. We'd also, the people before me went through the neighborhood and used MHDC money and bought up anything that was vacant or abandoned. And I could remember going to Jeff's City and telling the MHDC people, you know, release these $60,000 mortgages on every property. And the country boy from Springfield, he looked at me and said, what? You want us to release the 60? I said, every property you lent my predecessor in the city on these, it has a negative value. And I mean, we did convince them, I think Bob Holden and Roger Wilson helped us there. But in the Shaw neighborhood, right now, we have the least foreclosures, we have the least tax sales. And during Joanne's tenure in the Shaw neighborhood, we picked up those 12 vacant properties. We implemented a corner program and did a tremendous number of projects. And, you know, we had John Stephens, you think about some of the people, they got their teeth started with Joanne in the Shaw neighborhood, and Craig Heller. A lot of other developers came and learned from Joanne in the 8th Ward. And during Joanne's tenure, and I'd look back, because we had a special taxing district in the Shaw neighborhood, we had over 200 tax-abated properties. People gave me a little bit of a grief over that, but all of those properties are paying full bill now at $250,000, $300,000. Every project that we did when we started was low to moderate income people, because that's what we could attract in our neighborhood. We made sense, we made the money work, and we improved the whole neighborhood. One in particular I remember, and she might remember, the electric dog lady on the corner of Cleveland and Thurmond. I mean, we had, it was burnt, this lady had eight dogs in there, I think she moved to the 15th Ward. When we were finally done, we paid her rent to go somewhere else. But that was on a corner, it was a seriously, seriously significant property, and it's right where our dog park is now. But what Joanne, you know, demonstrates is that a city employee can make such a dramatic difference in the city of St. Louis and in any given neighborhood. During her tenure, like I said, we did more than 200 gut rehabs in the Shaw neighborhood, which is, you know, really, really significant, and made a difference in my community. Today, when I first got elected Alderman, at that time, Joanne started, I'd go to church, and we were having about eight funerals for every baptism. Today, we're having 12 baptisms for every funeral. We've changed, we've brought young people back into the city. We've changed the neighborhood to have a balance of homeowners and really, really good rental property. And the Shaw neighborhood in the city of St. Louis as a whole, because like I said, those 200 rehabs are paying full blow property taxes. Now, we owe Joanne a very large debt of gratitude. Thank you so much, Joanne.
Well, I want to thank Alderman Conway and Alderman Artman for those very kind words. I thought that they really hit the nail on the head talking about the neighborhoods and the people in them. And we have some of the people from the neighborhoods I've worked in. worked in here with me today. Makes me very proud to have been associated with people that are so dedicated among the people that do it as volunteers, that never get paid for any of the time that they've spent. And that can mean twenty years, in some cases, of people coming to meetings and, in Benton Park, that means meetings that last till ten or eleven o'clock at night. But it's just amazing how much dedication there is in the neighborhoods, and that's very inspiring for a person like myself to do their best for the city. And I have really enjoyed working with Alderman Ortman and Alderman Conway and so many others as well when we had special projects, and I just am so thrilled to be honored, and I especially want to acknowledge my colleagues at CDA and Jill Claibor in particular for being so supportive and so great a leader. And we also remember G. Stewart for her leadership of Operation Impact. She retired a few years ago. So, thank you all very much.
And who do you have with you supporting you today?
Oh, sorry. I'll introduce my husband Neville, and my daughter Shania, and my grandson Evan. And I have with me also my very dear friends Lou Green, Lois Shamel, Lonestein, Marge, and Brad Weir, and some of our Housing Corporation folks, Father Jim West of Saint Wenceslas Catholic Church, Frank Rattle in the front row there, also on the Benton Park West Board. That's our neighborhood that we're working really hard in now. In the back row there, you see Kevin Kelleher, who's been on the Benton Park Housing Corporation Board even longer than Ken Ortman. And next to him, Sean Spencer, who heads up the Shaw Neighborhood Housing Corporation now, along with Ben Phillips, who also serves on that board. And Sean is doing a great job in Shaw neighborhood now. And I feel very comfortable retiring, knowing that we have such great leaders in the neighborhoods. Thank you.
There's been a request to make this resolution embank. It's been moved. Would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I move we embank Resolution eighty-seven.
Seconded by all of them from twelfth, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please make note of that change. Change the resolution to reflect that motion. Make it embank.
So noted.
Now, it's time for the good part. But before I get into the resolution, I carried these up here. These are the pages of development that we've done in the Ninth Ward. And when I say "we," Joanne's probably gotta memorize, just, I don't know how she can keep track of them besides what she's done in Shaw, and all the neighborhoods, in the Eighth Ward, the Ninth Ward, and every neighborhood that she's worked on. But this is the kind of stuff where I can stand up in front of meetings and say, "I'll challenge, you know, our housing record against anybody." We've, most of these buildings are brick buildings that we've saved. You know, they're not falling apart anymore, they're bringing taxes in, people live there. Steve talked about the kids. That's the other thing that we're seeing in Benton Park. When we have our annual picnic at Benton Park, numerous kids now. I used to be able to keep track of them, not anymore. Now, it's Joanne's time. Joanne, I'm honored to do this, and this was because she actually retired August the first. We started on it a long time ago. And I think everyone, you know, got something sent out, and just to make a point, Alderman Carter is on here. He wanted to be on this resolution too, so we needed to officially embank it, but, you know, he's on here too. So, all twenty-eight of us are on this resolution.
Wow, thank you very much.
Yeah, and I wouldn't give it up, so you can't give it up either.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks to everybody.
We're gonna do some pictures over here.
Yeah, we're gonna do pictures over here. Let me have my paperwork.
Also want to add my congratulations to Joanne for a job well done. She really made a difference throughout the city over, and I know she helped in the Sixth Ward and wards all throughout the city. And so, we'll miss some of her works in the city, but wish her well in her retirement. And I know her husband's glad to have her back. We'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction, well, actually, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. We'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. All of them from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest Jeff Bozo and his father Tom. Jeff's from my ward. Firefighter Al from Local Seventy-three. And then, sitting with me today is Jeff Clifton. He's with the, he's a treasurer of the Saint Louis City Labor Club, and later today, we're gonna vote on making him a board member of the Affordable Housing Commission. So, these are my guests for today.
All of them from the third.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest Anthony
All of them from the sixteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I would like to have as my special guest today, Mr. David Holmes, plumbers and pipe fitters, and Anthony Lancia with AGC.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? All of them from the fourth.
Thank you, Mr. President and members of the board. I'd like to have as my special guest, Mr. Chris Green, who's gonna help us with that monument with Greg Carter, the AT&amp;T family, the Amarin Ue family, and Ms. Lorna Alexander, who just left. She is CDA Supreme. Thank you.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? All of them from the twenty-third.
You know what, I would like to introduce Frank Cullen as one of my special guests today. I didn't see him, but I see him standing in the corner.
All of them from thirteen, you recognize on approval of the minutes. Hold on for a second, all of them from, wait, hold on one second.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of July sixth and thirteenth meetings.
Move by all of them from thirteenth, seconded by all of them from eleventh, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All of them from the tenth, you recognize to wrap up our introduction of our guests.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Apparently, you didn't recognize me when I'm back in regular clothes. It is my pleasure to be here on September the fourteenth, which is National Cream-Filled Donut Day for you folks who are not aware of that. And on this day, we're especially pleased, especially pleased to have back my special guest, who's resting in the donut room right now himself, Mr. Fred Stefan, who went through surgery over the summer, and he's doing very well. Mr. Fred Stefan, thank you.
Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes. I have as my honor the mayor the following correspondence. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for reappointment to the Saint Louis Public Library Board of Directors. The reappointment of John Dubinsky, who resides at six-twenty-five South Skinker, whose term will expire on June the first, two thousand fifteen. The reappointment of Gabe Gore, who resides at fifty-six-six Westminster, and whose term will expire on June the first, two thousand fifteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of Saint Louis.
All of them from the sixteen, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Saint Louis Public Library Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President and Board of Aldermen. I move for the approval of the aforementioned appointees.
Move by all of them from the sixteen, seconded by all of them from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Saint Louis Affordable Housing Commission. The appointment of James M. Clifford, who resides at thirty-three thirty-seven Limp, and whose term will expire on June the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of Saint Louis.
All of them from the thirteen, you recognize on the mayor's appointment to the Saint Louis Affordable Housing Commission.
Thank you, Mr. President. I yield to the Alderman from the Ninth Ward.
All of them from the ninth, the all of them from the thirteen yielded to you, so the motion is yours.
Thank you. I move that we accept this appointee.
Move by the Alderman from the ninth, seconded by all of them from the twenty-third, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individuals for appointment to the Central West End Community Improvement District Board of Directors. The reappointment of Jim Smith, who resides at two-thirty-two North Kings Highway, whose term will expire on July first, two thousand sixteen. The reappointment of Tripp Strab, who resides at eighty-two eighty-two Forsyth, and whose term will expire on July first, two thousand sixteen. The reappointment of Jim Dwyer, who resides at twenty-seven Maryland Plaza, and whose term will expire on July first, two thousand sixteen. The appointment of Philip Slane, who resides at forty-seven thirty-five McPherson, and whose term will expire on July first, two thousand and sixteen. I respectfully request your approval of these appointments. Sincerely, Francis G. Slay, Mayor of the City of Saint Louis.
All of them from the seventeen, you recognize on the mayor's appointments to the Central West End Community Improvement District Board of Directors.
Thank you, Mr. President. Given the necessary absence of the Alderman from the twenty-eighth ward, I am rising in her stead to move that we accept these appointments.
Move by all of them from the seventeenth, I entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by all of them from the ninth, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Pose, motion carries.
That's the extent of report of city officials.
All of them from the ninth.
Sorry, it took me a while to get back to my desk, but I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour, sitting over here.
Dispense with line item seven. Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading board bills.
Board Bill one-thirty-five, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving the petition of owners of real property seeking creation, extension, renewal, and establishment of the Flora Place Community Improvement District containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of properties indicated on the district map from J. Industrial to F. Neighborhood Commercial District for forty-four fifty West Pappy containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from E. Multiple Family Dwelling District and H. Area Commercial District to the H. Area Commercial District only for one-hundred North Euclid Avenue containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Texas at Crittenton containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight oh-one Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-forty, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight sixty-two McDonald. Board Bill one-forty-one, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight thirty-eight South Utah. Board Bill one-forty-two, sponsored by Alderman Triplett, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-three fifteen through twenty-three twenty-three Tennessee. Board Bill one-forty-three, sponsored by Alderman Triplett, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-eight oh-one through oh-three Akamak. Board Bill one-forty-four, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for thirty-four oh-eight Wisconsin. Board Bill one-forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-three twelve Missouri containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-forty-six, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for nineteen twenty Sydney containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-forty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for twenty-two twenty-six Edwards containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-one thirty Shaw containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-forty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Valmer, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for fifty-two thirty-one through fifty-two thirty-five Bishop containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-fifty, sponsored by Alderman Conway, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for forty fifty-nine through sixty-one Shenandoah containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-fifty-one, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance approving a blighting study and a redevelopment plan for thirty-eight thirty-seven Wyoming containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-fifty-two, sponsored by Alderman Vacaro, in ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for sixty-seven hundred Arsenal. Board Bill one-fifty-three, sponsored by President Reed and Alderman Villa, in ordinance pertaining to prostitution, loitering, containing a penalty, severability, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-fifty-four, sponsored by Alderman Florida, in ordinance containing definition prohibiting sale, delivery, or distribution of ephedrine, pseudoephedrine, their salts, their optical eye summers, requiring the reporting of theft of ephedrine products containing a penalty, severability, and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-fifty-five, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission to revoke the Deaconess Health System Community Unit Plan as indicated on district map contingent upon acquisition of the identified properties by the Saint Louis Zoo and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-fifty-six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportement in the total amount of four million dollars from the Airport Development Fund into the airfield building and environs project containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-fifty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission and the Board of Estimate and Apportement authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller with the recommendation of the Director of Airports to accept and enter into and execute a grant agreement offered by the U.S. of America acting through the Federal Aviation Administration of the Department of Transportation, the grant agreement to provide for the reimbursement or payment to the city for costs incurred at the airport for city improved public works and improvement programs and other city-approved airport programs and projects containing a severability clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-fifty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, in ordinance amending ordinance six-four five oh-nine by modifying terms of real estate tax abatement for the fifty-seven-hundred Oakland redevelopment area. Board Bill one-fifty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Roadie, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of sum of three thousand one hundred dollars a quick claim deed to remise release and for every quick claim to the state of Missouri certain city-owned property located in City Block forty-eight seventy-nine known and numbered as forty-three fifty-four west, rear West Pappen Street. Board Bill one-sixty, sponsored by President Reed, in ordinance pertaining to mortgage foreclosure intervention containing a penalty, severability, and an emergency clauses. Board Bill one-sixty-one, sponsored by Alderman Ortman, in ordinance pertaining to solicitation on highway entrance and exit ramps within the city containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-sixty-two, sponsored by Alderman Davis, in ordinance approving a petition of various owners of certain real property to establish a grand center area community improvement district establishing the grand center area community improvement district containing a severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill one-sixty-three, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from F. Neighborhood Commercial District to the C. Multiple Family District for properties on Finney, C.D. Banks, North Van de Venner containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-sixty-four, sponsored by Alderman Bosley, in ordinance recommended by the planning commission to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from B. Two Family Dwelling District for properties on John Avenue and Carter containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of our first readings.
Reference the committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill one-thirty-eight. To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bills one-fifty-six and one-fifty-seven. To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bills one-fifty-three, one-fifty-four, and one-sixty-one. To the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bills one-thirty-five, one-fifty-nine, one-sixty, and one-sixty-two. To the Housing Committee, Board Bills one-thirty-six, one-thirty-seven, one-fifty-five, one-fifty-eight, one-sixty-three, and one-sixty-four. To the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills one-thirty-nine, one-forty, one-forty-one, one-forty-two, one-forty-three, one-forty-four, one-forty-five, one-forty-six, one-forty-seven, one-forty-eight. Board Bills 139, 140, 141, 142, 143, 144, 145, 146, 147, 148, 149, 150, 151, and 152. That's the extent of reference to committees.
We dispense with line items 13 through 16, third reading consent count.
Board Bill 5.
All of them from the 13th, you recognize on the third reading consent count.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for a third reading and final passage of the bill on the consent calendar.
Move by all of them from 13th, I entertain a second on that motion, seconded by all of them from the 9th, any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Troop, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Triplett, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Valmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderman Howard, Alderman Florida, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Roadie, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vacaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Conway, Alderman Arnowitz, Alderman Roadie, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Cruzen, 21 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of all of them from 13th and third read and finally passed the aforementioned bills.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Dispense with line item 18, report on enrollment.
Board Bill number 5.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix his signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. All of them from the 3rd, you recognize.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to recognize a great, I wouldn't say politician, but she's a public servant, Jamila Naishid, who is the new senator of the fifth senatorial district of the state of Missouri. Jamila Naishid.
We will dispense with line items 21 and 22. Ms. Lancia, unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Breakfast today was provided for Alderman and staff by the Plumbing Industrial Council, Industry Council, I'm sorry. Thursday, Neighborhood Development Committee meeting at 2:00 in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Any further announcements? All of them from 13th, you recognize on the motion excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the 20th, 22nd, and 28th wards due to necessary absence.
Then move by all of them from 13th, seconded by all of them from 25th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carries. All of them from 13th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, 10:00 a.m., September 21st.
Move by all of them from 13th, I entertain a second by all of them from 11th, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose, we stand adjourned.